Councilman Elpers.
Aye.
Councilman Brickmeyer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore.
Aye.
Councilman Weaver.
Aye.
Councilman Hieronymus.
Aye. There being nine ayes and zero nays, Resolution C 2022-13 is hereby declared adopted. Thank you.
On me again.
You're up again. That's right.
Resolution C 2022-14, a resolution of the common council of the city of Evansville in support of economic development incentives offered to Hometown Title LLC and Gonnerman &amp; Meyer Law, LLC, city of Evansville, to expand operations at 20 Northwest First Street, Suite 100.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution C 2022-14? Hearing a first from Councilor Trockman and second from Councilwoman Mosby. Floor is now open for discussion.
All right, so Rhett Gonnerman and his law business, law firm business partner Greg Meyer, basically discovered a really large need for a title closing company. So in speaking with local credit unions and national banking associations, they decided to start Gonnerman, sorry, Hometown Title, just in April of this year. They currently have five full-time and three part-time employees and plan to scale pretty rapidly and hope to have 15 full-time employees by the end of 2023 with an average wage of $28.12 per hour. So today I'm recommending a $15,000 training grant, a 50-50 match, $1,000 per city of Evansville resident. Any questions?
Andrea, how are we paying for it?
So 50% is from Riverboat Funds and then the rest is from the state, right? A grant from the state of Indiana.
Any other questions, comments from council on this?
It's related but unrelated, and Russ, you may know the answer. I know you know the answer to this. How is the Riverboat Fund, has it rebounded much more since COVID seems to be, or are we on the other side, you know? Because of COVID, have we bounced back? Have things got back to normal, in a sense?
I guess, that's, appreciate that question. So the casino fund has bounced back, revenues have been good at the Bally's now casino. Approximate balance, $19,765,328. So I think for a while last year we were in the 16s. And we've encouraged departments that had capital projects to get those out of the way as soon as they can. So I think they've been spending a little bit higher clip. But anyway, the fact that it's right, close to 20 million, we're pleased with that and it's, revenue-wise, it's doing well.
And I did kind of hold off on a lot of training grants in the past few years because of that. And so I chatted with Russ on the same, same topic.
Any other comments, questions from council? Any comments, questions from the public regarding this matter? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Trockman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosby.
Aye.
Councilman Burton.
Aye.
Councilman Elpers.
Aye.
Councilman Brickmeyer.
Aye.
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore.
Aye.
Councilman Weaver.
Aye.
Councilman Hieronymus.
Aye. There being nine ayes and zero nays, Resolution C 2022-14 is hereby declared adopted.
Thank you.
Andrea, I have one question for you. On tax abatement for, well, to say, building a hotel, do you require any follow-up documentation of payroll to show that people are paying their state and local taxes for their employees?
Somewhat. So I review their CF1, which correlates to their SB1 that is submitted at the beginning of the project.
Right.
So the SB1 tells us what their wages, their target wages are.
Right.
And then the CF1 is like follow-up on how they're doing compared to what they said they would do. So it's a box with just usually an hourly or salary rate. So it doesn't get very specific, but I do check on that and compare it to what they said they would do.
We may need to have a sidebar meeting on this. I'd like to follow up on that with you later. I'll give you a call.
Andrea, I got a question for you. It's Ryan's fault. No, I wanted to ask about electric charging stations. And what sparked it was, I know that the hotel, for instance, has chargers in front. But is that the only place in the downtown area that has the electric vehicle chargers?
I know there's some in the city of Evansville parking garages.
Sycamore Street? And then I guess just looking at a broader scope as electric vehicles are becoming more common, the, making sure that there are stations available in, you know, down center of Evansville.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Resolution C 2022-15, a resolution of the common council of the city of Evansville, Indiana, expanding tenant assistance programs to include residents of Martin Park Apartments.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution C 2022-15?
So moved.
Second.
Having a first from Councilor Burton, second from Councilwoman Moore. Floor is now open for discussion of this item among council. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very simply, after your last council meeting, after hearing the plight of residents of that apartment complex, Martin Park, used to be Eco Square, and I think before that, when I was in school, it was Chateau Village, had a lot of friends that lived there, had a conversation with Sarita Cabell at Memorial, CDC, who's managing the 50,000 that council very kindly allowed us to provide assistance to Woodland Park residents who wished to relocate but had an impediment to securing a new piece of housing that costs $700 or less, whether it was an application fee, or a deposit, or a water bill that was owed from years past, or a Center Point bill that was owed from years past. So after that, after that council, after that council meeting, had a conversation with Sarita, and we decided that we were going to ask council if we could expand that, because the ordinance, the resolution and the contract both stipulate residents of Woodland Park. And so we thought the best way to do this would come to council to get a resolution allowing us to amend the contract to add residents of Martin Park, Echo Square, for assistance in the same way that we're assisting people at Woodland Park that have a need to move, can move, just there's an impediment to them getting a new, new housing. So this would solve that problem up to $700. Tamika Goines is here from West, she's the one that, the spreadsheet that I emailed everybody, she's the one that keeps me informed as to how many have applied, who's been assisted, she keeps track of the spreadsheet, she takes the phone calls, Sarita came with her, because Tamika's never been to council before, I guess. So, but, but they're here, if you have any technical questions about how they're, how they do what they do, we just want to add this complex to the, we want to amend the contract, and we thought the best way to do that would be via resolution from council, giving us permission to do that.
I'd just like to say thank you for taking the initiative to do this. There were a lot of sad, hard stories to listen to last meeting, and to know that this is an option for people that might otherwise feel trapped, it's, it's a good thing to do, so I appreciate it.
Well, that's what Sarita and I talked about, that the, you know, humanitarian crises don't know a side of town, or a zip code, or whatever.
Right. Good work.
Yeah, I too, just want to thank you for reaching out and, you know, making this happen as well. I think it's, it's great for the tenants. I've spoken to several of them, and I know the last meeting was, was very long with a lot of heartfelt stories. I did reach out to the police department and just wanted to let you know that there is an ongoing investigation on those, those tax, I'm sorry, their rental checks that were stolen. There was actually seven different complexes, apartment complexes that were hit on May, I think, 2nd and 3rd, or maybe 2nd, 4th, something like that. There were six in Evansville and one in Newburgh. They not only stole the rental boxes, but they also broke into a couple of the apartment complex offices and stole those checks. So there is an ongoing investigation, criminal investigation that the police department's working on, and that's all they can really say because it's ongoing. Hopefully they catch them, I think they will.
Hope so.
Any other comments, questions from council on this?
I had a question. Kelly, I mean, does it have to be specific to a certain apartment complex, or can we just make it?
That's the way the contract is written.
Ah, gotcha. And if it was just broad, you could just apply it to any apartment complex in need of?
Well, I think if you have a ground swell of people who come to you for assistance, I think you help them first. So that's what, that's what Sarita and I talked about, is that it seems to be that's where the, that's where the need is, so we address that. And if it needs to be changed later, we can. Because we're, we're going to extend it, it was to be paid out June once, we're going to extend it to December 31st to allow new folks that are now, that will be able to do that, to access the program.
I think the one thing that both those two complexes had in common is that there were multiple problems in multiple buildings, and a lot of people were in a position where, had they been given the choice in assistance like they got, were willing to. How many have moved from the other?
They've gotten 14 requests and they've moved 11. They've provided assistance to 11, and there's three that they still are working on, but there's issues with those three.
But if we find another complex is the same way, we can follow the same path. So of the 50,000, how much is unspent? Sorry, I want to get out of here for six. I'm not the one talking.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, okay.
It is $42,245.49.
So at 700 a pop, we're going to be around with that money for a while, it looks like. Okay, thank you, I'll shut up now.
Any other comments, questions from council? Okay. Any comments, questions from the public on this particular item? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Trockman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosby.
Aye.
Councilman Burton.
Aye.
Councilman Elpers.
Aye.
Councilman Brickmeyer.
Aye.
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore.
Aye.
Councilman Weaver.
Aye.
Councilman Hieronymus.
Aye. There being nine ayes and zero nays, Resolution C 2022-15 is hereby declared adopted.
Thank you so much. Memorial's doing a good job in getting this done for us.
I do have a little more information to add on that. Code enforcement, I'd taken the list that people signed up for last meeting, and they've been out and they've got inspections done on 11 of the properties, 11 of the units with letters sent out listing the violations and with the pictures to get them fixed. And they had four new people contact late Friday or this morning, and so they'll be there to inspect those in a day or two. So there'll be ongoing cases, it'll take a little time to get them into administrative hearings, but we'll get them there and they'll have to answer for each violation. And if they don't, then there's a process to find them and, and put a lien on a property. So should be able to get some good results.
I was going to say, for the tenants here, please don't leave until y'all see Ms. Goines, please.
Miscellaneous business.
The next meeting of the common council will be Monday, May 23rd, 2022, at 5:30 PM. Are there any additional comments from members of council this evening?
President Hieronymus. I asked Deputy Mayor Steve Schaefer, interim Parks Director, to maybe give us an update on the maintenance plan for parks, just getting inundated with complaints over grass, and is there a plan? Are we short on staff? Just, if you don't mind, just give us an update. Are we short on equipment? It's, the Greenway is just a nightmare, along 41 there, those pictures I sent.
Yeah, sure, Steve Schaefer, Deputy Mayor, Parks Director. It's, it's, as we discussed at Parks Board meeting this, last week, and actually Greenway Advisory Board at 4 o'clock today, it's, it's that time of season. Unfortunately, it's the wet weather, it's, it's the time where grass is kind of out of control everywhere. Unfortunately, we, you know, we have three crews, two, two people to a crew, except for the third one, and that only has one. So, you know, those three crews have to mow on a rotating schedule, I think, two-week schedule, all the 51 parcels throughout, throughout the city. So we also have a contract with a vendor that does the boulevards and other areas. We, we share the responsibility of the Greenway, the high rail with levy authority. So I know that, actually, one of the pictures that came through, I took a picture in the same spot yesterday, but a different angle, because I was, I saw that as well. And that, that spot, I had been told was last cut on April 29th, so it's due to be cut this week. So, long and short of it is, is it's that time of season, and I have a list of areas, and most of them that, that I had inquiries today were on the schedule for today, so. But if there is, if you do see an area that is out of control unexpectedly, please let me know, reach out, and we'll make adjustments to, to cover it. So unfortunately, our, you know, we have vast amount of areas that, that need to be cut, and sometimes when, when people don't know whose responsibility it is, a lot of times, the Parks Department gets called to, to cut it, as I found out last week with Central Dispatch. But, and it turned out it wasn't even our contract after all the hoopla, so. But, to answer your question, yes, totally understand, and maintenance crew is doing as, you know, they're, they're doing a good job, but they understand that right now is the busy time, and everybody's, wants their, their grass cut. So we'll try to do as best as we can.
Thank you.
Any, any questions on specific ones?
The third, the third crew, are you getting somebody else hired, so there's two guys on there?
I hope so, yes.
Okay. Is that in the process, or?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
I have a question about the boat ramps. So are we in the process of getting bids and different things to take care of the, the potholes? Because Memorial Day is a big boating season, and I'm starting to have boaters call me and ask what's going on.
Right. Angel Mounds, I think, is, is that the worst?
Angel Mounds, the worst one, yes.
So we've had that quoted, we have those estimates back. And right now, I was on a call this, this afternoon with US Corps of, US Army Corps of Engineers about our two boat ramps, and with Parks Board attorney to try to figure out how we navigate a new agreement. We're, can't say a whole lot, but we're trying to move forward with getting that agreement in place. But on the, on a parallel path, we do have bids, and we're trying to fix the, possibly just the main road and the boat ramp at Angel Mounds this time.
Okay.
We may do that immediately and then wait on the bigger parking lot, but I, I hear you. Yeah, and then they also want to build, the operator wants to rebuild that structure.
Yes, that's, people keep breaking into it, it's really rotted out, so, okay, thank you.
Steve, I do have a question.
Yeah.
And I posed this to Councilwoman Mosby a few weeks ago, and we were talking offline about the boat ramp. But that particular property is in county jurisdiction, what, do you know, what it, what is the historical reason why the city of Evansville has a responsibility for that particular ramp?
Good question. I don't know why the city has jurisdiction on there. I do know that our lease, or our agreement with the US Army Corps of Engineers is dated back '71, I believe, and so from the contract assault today, it's up until 2029. So if the county is, if they want to, to put their hand up and, and offer to step in, I'm, I'm all ears. But I can find out, but right now we're trying to fix some of the issues with reporting and maintenance plan and so forth with the two boat ramps, and get everything straightened out so that we can move forward, because they have been neglected. And while we've thought that improvements have been made, they actually haven't been made. So we're trying to rectify a lot of those, those, those problems.
Matt, I had one more question as well. Did I hear you say that it had, has been bid out already, or, or there's going to be a bidding process that's going to open up soon?
For, for the paving, we've gotten estimates on that, but we have not bid out the management. There's still a question whether or not that's going to be done, simply because there's only, there's existing operators, but those, we're not sure if that, if we'll need to renew those, or if, if we need to bid it out, we will.
Okay.
If you, if you see, I am being evasive a little bit, simply because of?
I can't pick up on that at all, Steve.
The complete mess that was left, and trying to, trying to fix a lot of that.
Yeah, understandable. There's some things that you can divulge.
Right.
And then there's some things you can't divulge, I guess.
And hopefully, hopefully we'll, we'll move past a lot of this stuff, and we'll be able to make some improvements. And I think, one thing I thought you were going to ask is, is kind of the status of that 300,000 that the council appropriated. We, we are spending that money efficiently on things that we are finding as we go through that park analysis and so forth. Just last week, the Parks Board approved a contract with Rundell Ernstberger and Hayford Associates for the strategic five-year master plan. So during that process, I want, I've asked them to go to every single park, do an inventory, meet with the neighborhood associations, and try to figure out every single park, as we've discussed, whether it needs to be a park. If it is a park, then is the right playground equipment there, is, is it being used for the right purpose? So that process will be happening in the next couple months.
Would you mind if they also reach out to the council person in that area?
Yeah, definitely.
Because I would really like to speak to them as well.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or any additional comments from members of council? Hearing none, we'll open it up to comments from the members of the audience, and first up is Kendall Faust. All right. No problem. We will pull up, is it Denise Thomas? And as a reminder, everybody, you have three minutes, and if you could state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Denise Thomas, and address is 4500 Inspiration Street, Evansville, Indiana, 47714. I'm here on behalf of my aunt that lives in Martin Park Apartments. First, I want to say thank you for providing funding for them in this time of need, it's really appreciated. I also just wanted to add a little bit in regards to what's going on as well still at this point, although they're starting to find funding to help them move, unfortunately their ledgers are still inaccurate, they're showing stolen money. I also spoke with the detective, and he said that is not how it's supposed to go, because they are listed as the victim. So also in regards to the building commission, if you're having trouble to find who the owners are, we, I just wanted to state those on record. Owner is Samuel Martin of Michigan, Dylan Borland of Michigan, also partners of his company, The Borland Group as well. There's about three people that actually have had direct contact with the tenants in the ward, also Gil Guzman, and there's one other, but I can't remember the name right now. The problem is that they're also, and I know your hands are tied, but if someone can kind of give us a direction on where we need to go from here, is that they're saying they don't have insurance, and as an apartment complex, they're supposed to have insurance, they're saying they can't claim it under their insurance, I mean. And as an apartment complex, you're supposed to have insurance. I also have email addresses, addresses, and phone numbers, if anyone needs that, so that they can get into direct contact with them. But we would like to find out, is there a claim on this? Do they actually have adequate insurance? Because anybody that has a home, they have to have insurance. People in their apartments are required to have insurance for their actual apartment. So we need to know why this is not going through the insurance company, because the rents are being placed back onto the residents. For instance, my aunt has $1,850 that says that is due, she has receipts showing that she paid that amount, and nothing's being done in regards to her ledger. Also, last but not least, if some of these people go to the apartment and it shows that they have a balance, they may not be able to get in. If they are given them evictions because they're trying to go around the Indiana state law, Indiana tenant law, that says you have to give 90 days non-renewal for those that have leases still, then that can affect them being able to move. So we still need help in regards to that. We just need to know the insurance, if there's a claim, and also what's going to be done about the ledger, because they're not communicating with the residents. Any questions? I tried to say it fast.
I'm, I'm looking at the attorney. Just only from the standpoint of, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the jurisdiction is, or what, like, what this body can do as it relates to that issue.
Right.
But I feel like that could be something legal, but I'm nowhere in there an attorney, so I'm going to turn it over to.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I don't think we really have much authority in that arena. I mean, specifically, what is it you would like to see done?
What we would like to see done, and I, like I said, I understand that the city council doesn't have, you know, much leverage, and the mayor's office doesn't as well, you know, we've reached out to many people. But because the building commission or its office is trying to get them fined, we thought that this information would be beneficial for you to have in case you're not getting any results from them talking back to you. But also, I don't know if the building commission or any other office can require for them to show that they have insurance.
I don't remember that being part, and I, I, we can, we can check the code, but I don't believe that's a requirement under the local, yeah, I mean, I think. Yeah, Crystal and, and code enforcement is saying that that's not a, a book that we have on the, on the laws right now. What I, I do, I do have a couple of questions. You did say that your aunt has receipts showing payment, I'm assuming, did she make those in cash, or did she?
At the time that?
Or the money order or something?
At the time that Martin Park took over, they shut down the portal where tenants can pay online. So the only way that they could pay is by money order, there was no one in the office for months, people working from home, or, and they were going through so many different property managers. So all money orders were placed into the box, the box was emptied and put into the office. So at the time that the current manager was there, she had all of the money orders from December to March, if they weren't cashed and placed on their actual ledger, they were inside the office. In the ward said to me over the phone that they had stacks of money orders still there before the robbery happened. So she paid by money order each time, December, January, February, and March. Three of those were considered stolen because one was actually processed, and the other three were not. We've given actual serial numbers and even a tenant rental verification form that was given to my aunt in February that showed that she was up to date and not late, and still, it's still on the ledger, $1,850 plus maze rent, because at this time, if you have any money on the ledger, then they're not accepting maze rent from anyone.
Can you, that, that document that you said, that said she was up to date, up to February, can you send that to our clerk?
I sure can, I'll send that, and I can send you the receipts as well, because May, March's rent luckily was through a bank money order. It's harder to get the money orders like from Western Union and MoneyGram, you have to actually pay for them to send a copy of the cash money order. But if you look at the serial numbers, put it in, it will tell you when it's cashed. And the property manager said that anything that was cashed between March the 7th and, before March 7th and to the end of March, it was from the stolen money orders. And all of her money orders with the serial numbers do say like March 7th, March 8th, March 9th.
I mean, if you paid the money to your landlord, and then they lost it, or it was stolen from them, I mean, this is outside sort of my scope here as city council attorney, but I will tell you, you know, I, I think you've done your job, and it's sort of on them. Now, the problem is that's sort of between you, it is between you and the landlord.
Right.
And so that, you know, I'd, I'd put the onus on them to, to say why you should have to pay more if you've already paid it.
Thank you.
But that's kind of a civil.
It is.
Litigation issue between you and the landlord.
Right, which is, a lot of the tenants are trying to find that litigation help, but in Evansville, we have plenty of lawyers, but we don't have any really in tenant law, except for Legal A. Legal A goes by your income, for some people that's making that break even, they're not able to get any attorney. So that's why we're digging on our own, so that we can find out. Because if there is an insurance claim for the lost stolen money, then you can't also require the tenants to pay that back.
Have you spoken to Human Relations Commission at all?
Yes.
Have you heard anything back?
Yes, so equal housing laws says that you can't discriminate against people of a sub, subcategory, correct? However, for some reason, the equal housing laws, they're trying to find a way through it because they're not discriminating against color, per se, although when I was in eviction court, everyone that was there was people of color. But because some 30-day notices are from people of all various ethnicities, sexual orientation background, what have you, they- they say that it's, they're, they're trying to find out how, what they can do to help. But because of equal housing laws, if you treat one tenant one way, you have to treat them all one way. And there are some tenants, I guess, that are liked, and so they are clearing their books with that, with the same amount of information, receipts given, but not cashed receipts given.
So why, why wasn't legal aid able to help?
Legal aid is not able to help if you make over a certain amount. So some of the people make over that certain amount, even though it's still, they're still on a budget. And, you know, you're making, I don't know, 10, 11, $12, and you're being rejected because you make more than what's, what
What the threshold is.
So everybody's still in a limbo. And like I said, I really appreciate the help from you guys, from the Memorial Fund, and also Knight Township, that's also helping. So that is wonderful, and that's great. I just fear that some of these people will go to the next apartment, and they will not overlook the balance that's on their ledger. My aunt was lucky. She got to apartment complex where they knew what was going on. And so even they reached out for a rental verification. The rental verification she had before was for Habitat. This one is to move until she has a place to go. And they have not sent anything back. So I'm kinda worried about those that will send out information to get received, and then they don't get any information or lack of accurate information back.
Do you know if there's been any, a staff member there on site at? I'm assuming she was at Martin Park East. Is that, is that where she was?
Yes, that's where she is.
Yeah. Are we seeing any more regular staffing of the office there?
As of what I remember, what, as of the last time that my aunt went to the office, it's still one leasing agent, one manager, one maintenance man for 157 units, both east and west.
Got one more for you. The Indiana Legal Services, have, have you talked to them with, what is this? Scott Wiley's?
No, so I'll get that.
Volunteer law program?
The volunteer law program, yes. I'll, I'll get that information to you.
Thank you so much.
I thought that's what you were talking about.
No, I think legal aid was first. Legal aid is on the first floor.
Oh, gotcha.
Thank you.
I mean, this seems like it could be, I don't, this could be right up Scott Wiley's alley, so you might reach out to him.
Okay.
Yeah. I will say this, Counselor Burton and I did have a conversation with the management organization that's, and they're gonna be coming up here pretty soon to give us a tour, talk about, you know, what their plans are for, you know, fixing these deficiencies and, and renovating the property. I think they did release something to the news media. I'm hoping that that's not what they're gonna come and talk to us about, because it just looked like a flow chart to me.
It is. And we actually gave that to the news, and I, it
Oh, is that?
Yeah, it did come across as good, which it is good if they had did it when they first started in November. And so we do want to see them going and progressing. That's not what any of the tenants want to see. They don't, they just want things fixed, they want their ledger fixed, and they don't want to pay, repay for stolen money. So that's the biggest issue. So it'll be very helpful to know what they say in regards to the ledgers when they do come up and, and say. Because I think at this time, someone that, I used to work in leasing, I understand that they brought these properties, they wanna, they wanna go back in, they wanna fix them and then re-market them at a higher rate. That is the goal, of course, for most companies that are investment companies that go in and buy apartments. No one's disputing that. What it is, is that when they went in, they did it absolutely the wrong way in regards to not allowing people to know that they have a 90-day notice that they're not renewing, and then letting the tenants know that don't have any contracts anymore, that they have a 30-day notice to move. If they had went in the proper way to do that, then you would see tenants saying, yes, I don't wanna renew, because all they wanna do, I know, is to go in and knock out some of that. But if you're going about it by evicting people wrongfully, and if you're giving them 30-day notices and saying you owe money for minute, for money that was under your roof literally and broken into and stolen, then that's the part that's, that's not proper. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. You, all right. Kendall Faust.
Good evening, Kendall Faust, 416 East Riverside, 47713. I just wanted to touch base quickly about a meeting that Direct Action Against Centerpoint Energy had with the mayor last Monday about a services fair he plans on having on May 18th and May 25th. He hasn't said or produced any solid plans about how he's going to communicate that to his constituents. And I'm asking that once he does have solid plans, dates, locations, rather, sorry, CK Newsom Center, that you guys could reach out to your constituents so that they are made aware. He plans on having representatives from Evansville Water and Sewer, of course, Centerpoint, Knight Township, Pigeon Township, other trustees, Cape, St. Vincent de Paul, and Salvation Army. Again, I'm not sure how he plans on publicly letting individuals know, but it will be on May 18th and 25th at the CK Newsom Center from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I also have tickets to the Nehemiah event that Cage is hosting across the street. If anyone would care for them, I'll just
Thank you. Kendall, I will say, the mayor and all of those organizations, Salvation Army, Cape, especially the township's offices, did have a meeting last week to do the planning and the organizing for it. I, I believe, as it was done in the past, specific notification will come from the mayor's office, as well as all of the other organizations tend to help promote it on their end as well, too. So just wanted to make you, update you on that side of it, too. Yep, my pleasure. And last, on the docket, well, on the orange paper, Heather Lobek.
Hi, I'm Heather Lobek. My address is 1013 North Villa Drive in Evansville. So first, I'm here for center or against Centerpoint. First, I'd like to say, or a reminder, I guess, affordable rates, not assistance programs. It's, it's wonderful to have these fairs or events, whatever you want to call them, but it's not helping. The funds for helping people move, it's wonderful. I, none of us would ever be against that. However, when you move, you're going to have to establish new, you know, new service for water, utilities, Centerpoint. And if those residents are behind in their bills, they're not going to be able to establish new service. So they will have to ask friends or family to establish for them. So I would like to keep that as a reminder. I am reading from one of the posts from our Facebook group, Direct Action Against Centerpoint Energy. One of our members wrote on March 31st, "My electric usage doubled. Now how does that even happen when I'm elderly and live alone most of the time? I have gas heat, gas water. I turned my furnace off two months ago. I'm freezing. No space heater, nothing. I rarely use the dryer. I have no dishwasher. I rarely use the electric stove. Nothing has changed from last year at this time. So how can they say I've doubled my electric since last year? I wash my hands in cold water. I use a basin to bathe. I stopped using the shower. I use nothing and still get double usage from this time last year. I call bull expletive." So I'm here to just remind everyone and just keep it on record, an open letter to Centerpoint, if you will. We need them to lower their rates. We don't need more assistance programs. Actually, we do, but that just goes directly to Centerpoint to line their pockets. Another thing I found while researching this is Con Edison, back in February of this year, voluntarily reduced their rates because of public outcry. It was only 8.8 cents per kilowatt hour, but they did it. So Centerpoint can also do it, but they're not. One more thing before I go. So today, as of today, we have 15 business days until the Centerpoint shut-off moratorium ends. 15 days for residents to pick up extra hours at work. 15 days for them to find a side job. 15 days to sell extra things around their home. 15 days to donate plasma. 15 days to borrow money. 15 days to be approved for assistance. Or Centerpoint could use those 15 days and choose to forgive past due balances. They have 15 days for Centerpoint to extend the moratorium. Those are things Centerpoint can do, but they won't do, because they are there for the bottom line, which I understand, they are a company. They need to make money, right? But there are so many things that they can do without making our residents apply for assistance. That just lines their pockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lobek. All right. There are no committee reports this me, reports this evening? Gosh, I cannot speak tonight, can I? That being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, you're having a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 6:26 PM. And we'll see y'all next door.